Yep, one time. Good evening, everyone. The regular meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors of April 24th, 2019 is called to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Manser?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Mr. Abarka?
Present.
Ms. Cordis?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Here.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Thank you.
If my colleagues would take a look at the agenda for the general session of the Board of Directors meeting, is there any objection to the approval of the agenda? Seeing no objection, the agenda is approved. We have four individuals this evening who have indicated they wish to address the board. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, and we will call each of you up. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, and so I will call you up individually. At this time, the Chair recognizes Susan Stocking from the DAC. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Bedell, Chairwoman Manser, members of the board. Last week, we had our fourth and final General District Advisory Committee meeting of the year, and I just wanted to give an overall recap of some of our accomplishments and our partnerships that we had this year. In our general meetings this year, we had featured speakers and organizations including the Missouri PTA, the Urban League, Justice in the Schools, KCPS Students in Transition, Junior Achievement, KCPS IT, KCPS Board Members addressing redistricting and the equity policy, Coalition for Kansas City Economic Development Reform, Truman Medical Center, Viking Village Food and Clothing Pantry, KCPS Moca and Mentoring Programs, Restore Community Church, Scholastic Education, Parent Camp, and the Transgender Youth Project. Over the course of the year, we have collaborated internally with the Moca Program, PTA, PTOs, and SAC members, School Board, School, Summer Fest, Strategic Alignment, Communications and Community Engagement, and the Board of Ed, Government Relations. Externally, we've also collaborated with the U.S. Tennis Association, KC Tiff Watch, Vote No on Question One Coalition, Pre-K Sales Tax Forums, KC Voices for Integration, League of Women Voters Visitation, CCO More Squared, School Board Forum, and Empower Missouri. So it's been a very active year for us. This last, we also had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Bedell and raise some of our key issues and concerns and action items, covering parent engagement and communications, Latinx communications, student athletics and extracurriculars, equity and enrollment, and teacher and staff professional organizations and development. So it has been a very full year with the District Advisory Committee. We also went through our District Advisory Committee Executive Board elections, and the 2019-2020 Executive Board members include Steve Burton, a community member, Demonte Rochester, Tiara Trotter, Ophelia Brinkley, Rosio Lopez, and Erica Taylor, as well as myself. So I'll be, we'll be continuing, and we will designate our board roles in our next Executive Board meeting. So I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to present as, present to the board monthly, and also if you are interested in meeting with the District Advisory individually, please reach out to me, and we would be glad to set that meeting up. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I will next invite Carla Mullis, who's speaking on student safety, to the podium. Welcome. You've got three minutes, but we're glad you're here.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Bedell and board. In February of 2019, I was reading about twins that I had in a teen program at the Boys and Girls Club. We had them in our program for a whole year before we discovered that they were 12 and not 13. They acted so grown, and now one of the twins will never make it to graduation. According to the school policy, the news report, in the news report, students fighting are to get off our campus. Once we get them off the campus, we've done what our policy dictates we need to do. This policy does not make students feel safe, and according to Angelique Wright, the twin sister, she felt as though the security wasn't worried once they were, they put them outside. Once they were outside, they weren't the school's concern. They were only worried about the people inside the game. It's obviously, obviously, sorry, it's obvious that the policy of just putting minors out should be changed. When there is an altercation with any minor without a car, a guardian should be notified. While watching the news conference after the shooting, Dr. Bedell said, stated it was an ongoing investigation, and they were not sure what school the twins belonged to. And to me, it shouldn't matter what school she belonged to. If we want our athletic program to succeed, we must do all we can to protect any minor coming into the building. Schools and libraries are the backbone of a community. If you're going to ask the community to fix itself, then we must look at what else the community has suffered. In 2012, I became a teacher's aide at J.A. Rogers Elementary and saw water withheld from children that were being too loud after recess. Then on our field trip to Powell Gardens, the kids were taken to the bathroom. They were told they couldn't drink water because they had milk at lunch, and she didn't want them peeing on the bus. They were in fourth grade. While working as a substitute teacher, I found out there are really great schools and awesome teachers in the district. However, it was also at these schools that I would see kindergarteners crying in the grass after a 40-minute sunny recess, in a bus line, getting told they couldn't get water after recess because they needed to get on the bus. But water wasn't it. I was at an elementary, I was at the alternative elementary school and saw kindergarteners come in late because the bus, because there was snow, and the principal made them throw their food away after only eating for a few minutes because breakfast time was over. I've also seen a teacher deny students their coats when there was snow on the ground because they were too loud. In 2013, I was a gym coach at Northeast High School for a year, when there weren't any middle schools. We had classrooms and gyms packed with students while all of KC wondered why, why our teens are at risk. Both kids and teens in this community need extra care because they are at risk at home and sometimes at these local schools. Food, water, and shelter. That cold night, February night, one of the twins lost their shelter and lost their life because, because, and because of that, we need to look at how our policy should be changed in these after-school programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullis. I'd like to next invite Tom Love, who's going to talk about board policy for kindergarten and first-grade children.
I, I'd like to make a note that I've handed out a, a sheet to the board, or I guess they're being handed out now, a formal Title I complaint, so we can get some reading help for our K through second grade students. Currently, we have a policy that I believe you'll find is basically, let's promote every, every child to the next grade level. The state has a law that you can utilize as board members, and you can change that for the kindergarten and first graders. That's what I'd recommend. The, well, the first question I asked seven years ago when I started coming to board meetings was how many first graders don't read at first grade level and they get promoted to second? And I found out that 30% of the children that were promoted to second grade were at kindergarten level or below, and there were only 12 students retained. So it was less than one, less, less than, like, half of the schools held back one child. You know, like, 474 children were at kindergarten level when they were put into second grade. Now, at that same time, about 40% of the students, we were attempting to graduate at age 17. We literally were putting children into kindergarten as four-year-olds, and we still have that going on today for the August birthday students. The cutoff is August 31st. That's not legal in other areas of the state of Missouri, but when they start school, they're starting a year before it's legal. But is anyone going to be held back? You can change that policy. You can write a board policy that actually gives the kindergarten teacher control over that and the first grade teacher. And I, I just hope you do. There's no reason for these children to fail. We've got to have these K through second grade literacy labs, too. We've got to have them. It's, we had 333 fourth graders that started this year that were at first grade reading level or below. Can you imagine that? How did they get there? How many hundreds are in third grade and in second grade and in first grade? 333 fourth graders started school this year that were at first grade reading level or below. There's no excuse for what's been going on here, and we need to comply with the Title I laws. And you guys can make that policy to give kindergarten teachers and first grade teachers the right to identify children that are not ready to be promoted. Why cause them to fail? Because they're not old enough? Kindergarten teachers know that summer birthday children are potentially an issue. They know that. You guys have the authority under the state law of Missouri to fix that, and I challenge you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Love. I'd like to call Shittar Sims, who wants to speak about issues at Northeast. Is Ms. Sims in the room? Okay. All right. So not seeing her, we will move to the next item. We're going to move to the Board of Directors' report, and before we go to the Revenue and Expenditure Report, the Board Chair wants to take a privilege and, and make a couple of comments here. First of all, many people probably know, because the Hallmark Cards Company makes us aware of it, that it is Administrative Professionals Day. And it is not just a goofy holiday, it's really an important one. We've got administrative professionals working throughout this school district, within our buildings, within central office here, who are doing yeoman's work every single day. We appreciate them. They are often the front-line people who, who everyone sees when they arrive at the school, when they, once they get past our entry point and security, the next person who's going to greet them and assist them is our, oftentimes, our administrative professionals. So in light of that, I want to thank all of those individuals who do that work every day in this district. And the Board of Directors also has its own administrative professional who has to work with a group of seven individuals, keep track of us, ride herd over us, make sure we're arriving in places on time, and that we've got pencils and materials whenever we need it. She does an incredible coordination effort, and it is really important for us to acknowledge this critical role that allows this board to function effectively. So with that, I want to thank June Kolkmeier and all of my colleagues. We have tremendous appreciation for you. You are doing a lot. You've helped us through this transition, and you are helping a whole new board of seven take hold of our roles, and for that, we are grateful. We've got a gift for you and one under the table. So, thank you, Ms. Kolkmeier. So, thank you again. The next thing that I, I want to make, just a, a brief comment, just because this is, the new board of seven was sworn in on April 10th, and that, that's quite a flurry of an experience for everyone. I think I remember when that happened to me back in 2014, and, and there's a lot to take in, so I am thrilled. We are all seated here tonight, and I am just delighted at the colleagues that have joined this board, their strengths and their spirit and their inquiry. It is a really exciting time for Kansas City Public Schools. So as I said, on April 10th, seven of us were seated on stage, representing the Kansas City Public Schools. The, for the community, I want you to know that the KCPS Board, we govern by board-adopted policies and according to case law, and we also adhere to sunshine law that stipulates how we notice meetings, provide information, and are accessible and available to the community. It is important, and it states in our board policy, that the board shall govern prudently, ethically, morally, lawfully, justly, and transparently, with an emphasis on outward vision rather than internal preoccupation, encouraging diversity in viewpoint, providing strategic leadership rather than administrative detail, establishing and maintaining clear distinction between the roles of the Board of Directors and the superintendent, making collective rather than individual decisions, the present and future rather than the past, and acting proactively rather than reactively. Within board policy under our governance process, it is the board's charge that we govern and act as a collective and not as individuals. I think that it is worth noting that because we are all going through a new forming and development process, and you will get to know all of us quite well over the next two to four years. And so people run as individuals, but we work together as a body, and my experience on this board is we are very powerful in how we do that together. So the, as a reminder in, for the community as well as for ourselves, individual board members do not have the authority, both by KCPS Board-adopted policy and by law, to represent the, the entire board. Community meetings with members of the public and public officials conducted by individual board members regarding district business, that is a violation of policy and case law, unless it's approved and agreed on by the whole board. There are specific roles that guide how we operate in the public sphere, and again, that is that we are not empowered to act individually, that we work together, that we make decisions as a body. We direct our inquiry to our administrative team led by our superintendent, Dr. Mark Bedell. We are open and welcome, and we are available to the community, and you can find and access us at any time. Our emails are publicly posted. We all have business cards. You can greet us and find us both here and in the community, and everyone is welcome to engage with individual board members, to write us letters, to reach out to us, and share your issues and concerns. But it is also important that board members take no individual action that could compromise the integrity of the board, the superintendent, or KCPS. So I, I want to share that as we start this new tenure and this new group, because we do have a responsibility as a board to strive for excellence in our governing, and that takes collective agreement and hard work on our end. The board's major policy focus is on the long-term outcomes for students of this district rather than on the administrative or programmatic means of attaining those outcomes. The students and families of this district are depending on us to be thoughtful, collaborative, and respectful leaders, and to respect the management role of our superintendent. And through this process with effective governance and a strong student-focused superintendent and educational team, this district, over the last few years, has truly moved academic performance higher than Kansas City Public Schools has seen in decades. If we individually make decisions that we undertake particular work of the district, we will interfere with this important process and break the trust we are charged to have with our superintendent and community. So with that, I welcome all of you and the people who are watching us. As I said, we are accessible and available to you. For the audience here and at home, you can watch our meetings live or view the meetings at your leisure on videotape by going to The Plug. So if you can't find anything good on Netflix tomorrow, and you fell asleep during this meeting tonight, you can go to The Plug and you can watch us all over again. The Plug is at www.theplugkcps.org, and you'll be able to access that. Prior to each board meeting, the Board of Directors meets in an executive session, and that begins at 5:00 PM in the Seven Oaks Conference Room. Executive session is primarily open for individuals to sit in and observe, except that there are often portions of the meeting that require closed business to discuss and act on legal matters, employment issues, and real estate. Both the executive session and the general business meeting are publicly noticed on our assembly system, which you can find under the Leadership section of the KCPS website. And finally, the board has a question cube that allows the community to ask questions. So while we may not be able to get to all community questions during a board meeting, those questions are captured, and the administration, we provide those to the administration, and they can provide, develop answers, both for us as a board and also for you as a community. So if you choose to submit a question via the question cube tonight or at a future board meeting, that number is 816-678-7099. So that concludes my remarks, and with that, I would like to turn it over for the presentation of this evening's Revenue and Expenditure Report. The Chair recognizes Board Treasurer Manny Abarka.
All right. So fellow board members, I'm going to do my best to get through this, and I think Ms. Quinnly has definitely prepared me to draw some conclusions for us and draw, of course, certain elements of the revenue and expenditure issue. So. Thank you. All right. So if you would, first look at our revenues. We're good? All right. Our revenue's here. Some things to draw conclusions at as I sometimes sit in board meetings and look at these documents. I'm trying to figure out what to do with this information. So I think the, the important element here is to look at the elements of our budget and where our funding is coming from, and the significant difference between our local funds, our county funds, our state funds, and our federal funds. Obviously, some of the variance stuff on the right-hand side, you all can read. I don't feel the need to go through this in, in great detail here, but a couple conclusions I want to bring to your all's attention. As you see, Ms. Quinnly has informed me that we budget or can readjust our budget twice a year. So that's why you're seeing the budget adopted here as of 12/31/2018, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that's because as our, as our revenues change throughout the year and our ebbing and flowing of our receipt of that revenue, we must adjust our budget based upon that. Did I get it right?
You did.
Okay. Perfect. And so that's why you'll see some of these adjustments here, but it's important to look at the budget versus variance percentages, and that compared to the previous year to see how we're doing overall. A couple of things that, to draw your attention with those things in mind, county revenues here were initially budgeted higher than last year, which is why you see some change in the percentages there. But my understanding is that will catch up in the, in the latter slide here, and we'll show you how that happens. Similarly, this one is important. As we talk about some other discussions in our, in our overall conversation, the state revenue here, you'll see changed, because as we cannot really necessarily project the increase and expansion of charter schools, more charter schools that are created create more student opportunities with the same pot of money. Did I get it all right?
Yes.
Okay. So that will continue to decrease as we add more charter schools to our system, and so that's something to keep in mind, especially as the broader discussion is looked at. So that, I think, is probably the main focus of the revenue side. Expenditure side. These are several buckets, as described to me, that, and how our money is spent. So this expenditure side goes hand-in-hand with this beautiful chart here, and it's basically the same thing, just spelled out overall. So I think this is important as we continue the discussions with this report specifically. I've asked Ms. Quinnly to make sure that we show these in different ways, so we're not seeing the same expenditures each time we have this report. Similarly, you'll see some ebbing and flowing in this as well as revenues come in and as expenditures come in towards, or are realized at, at the changing points of the year. So again, a couple of things to draw some attention towards here. The administrative side, this is something that I think I publicly complained about a little bit here. The administrative costs, budgeted versus actual, were part of the, part of the reason why those, those things are out of sync, is because it costs to have elections. And what was the price per line or per?
I can't tell you the amount per inch, but that's how we pay for it, basically.
Okay.
Is per inch on the ballot, roughly $185,000 in total for us.
So with that, and also, as we discussed, the transportation element of our legal side of things, those things were not necessarily projected, and so that's why you'll see the increase in expenditures in that category and why it's different from the previous year. I think that you'll see, let's see, there were several other variances that were not too dramatic here, but again, you can read those to your right-hand side there. The other important element that I want to draw your attention to is this final slide. Again, the pie just shows you the previous expenditure side there, but this bar graph here, or line graph, shows you how our income, our revenues come into our budget, and our expenditures are meeting those and ebbing and flowing. This was originally compared to the same time or the same amount of months for the, from the previous year, but we found it important to show you the full year so that you can see how the budgets expand, contrast, and meet each other again, so that we fall in line total with our, our revenues and expenditures. So with that, what did I leave out?
You did great.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Abarka. That was a very good report. Are there any questions for the Treasurer this evening? Any questions? All right. All right. Then the next items of business are the report of the superintendent. The Chair recognizes our superintendent, Dr. Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you all know, during the business meeting, part of the superintendent's report is to provide a video highlight, and we recently held our Teacher of the Year Appreciation Banquet, and it was a wonderful event, which recognized several principals that were finalists for Principal of the Year, in addition to all of our teachers from each school, the respective Teacher of the Year, and then the three finalists. This video will highlight that event and will also provide the winners to the community. Keep in mind that the Teacher of the Year will advance and will compete in the regional competition, and if this particular candidate does a great job, will have an opportunity to compete for the Missouri State Teacher of the Year. So we're ready to roll the video.
We are KCPS.
On Thursday, April 11th, Kansas City Public Schools hosted its 2019 Teacher of the Year Celebration at Drexel Hall. The KCPS Teacher of the Year program was started in 2017 under the leadership of Dr. Bedell in order to recognize the contributions of the classroom teacher and to honor, promote, and celebrate excellence in the teaching profession in alignment with our global ends and strategic priorities as a school system. This year's celebration was hosted by 2018 Teacher of the Year, Ajun Ravindran. About 200 guests were on hand to enjoy dinner and entertainment by the Lincoln College Preparatory Academy Jazz Convoy. The evening celebration began with the African-centered College Preparatory Academy dance troupe. That was followed by the presentation of the 2019 Principal of the Year Award to Dolores Brown of Phillips Elementary School. In her remarks, Ms. Brown talked about how she was led to enter education in order to have a positive impact on the entire community.
But guess what? My father got in wind of the fact that I was going to go back to law school, going to go to law school, and he became so alarmed. He said, "Daughter," and whenever he was serious about anything, that's how he would refer to us. He said, "Daughter, do you understand? Teachers train lawyers. Teachers teach doctors. Teachers teach business people. Being a teacher, you'll be able to touch the lives of everybody."
The evening culminated with the 2019 KCPS Teacher of the Year Award being given to Diane Mora. Ms. Mora teaches English and literacy to immigrant and refugee students at East High School. In her remarks, after accepting the award, Ms. Mora referenced her own past as the child of a Latino father and being undervalued by people in authority. Those experiences helped fire her passion for public education, particularly for serving refugee and immigrant children.
Well, in his book, It Won't Be Easy, Tom Radamacher says, "What we do is far less important than why we do it." So why do I teach? I teach because any acronym for students that includes the word limited, as does the federal acronym, LEP, for Limited English Proficiency, must be disproved and removed from education vocabulary. No student's story should ever contain the word limited.
While at East High School, Ms. Mora has set a standard for helping students quickly master English and literacy content no matter where they started in that process when they entered her class. Students are challenged with hands-on research projects and writing tasks that help them express their views and experiences.
So why do I teach? Because as Dr. Robert Nash from the University of Vermont has discovered, if I find the student's story, I will find the heart and soul of the student.
Ms. Mora developed an innovative partnership with Prep KC that provides students with an opportunity to present and talk about their writing with communications experts from around the region. She also led an initiative to have students from East High School and Liberty North High School visit with each other.
As you can hear, my students are anything but limited. Their stories are not limited either. Instead, Dr. Nash would say, quote, "These narratives draw our attention to our primary charge to help our students realize their best selves in all types of situations, both good and bad." So why do I teach? Because these and hundreds of other stories matter. Our students matter. What we do every day in our classroom matters.
I want to thank a couple of people, and I don't know if he's here today, but Ray Wykel within our Communication Division was the leader in organizing this, and I know it's a very stressful, a very stressful event to plan. So I want to thank Ray Wykel. I also want to thank the members of the Communication Team that came together to support him in making this a reality. Additionally, I want to thank Nicole Collier-White and the Education Foundation Board, and I see that Mr. Bill Coughlin is here, one of the active members on that board. Without their support, none of this is possible from a resource standpoint, and so we're thankful to have really actively involved community members supporting the efforts that these educators are putting forth to try to add value to the students that we serve. So thank you, and that actually concludes the Superintendent's Report.
The next items of business are our regular business items. The Chair recognizes Dr. Bedell and his team to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, the administration is requesting that the Board approve the Summer School Quest Program approval in the amount of $3,114,665, as we prepare to enter into our summer session of schooling. Kristy Harrison is at the podium to provide any questions and a quick overview as requested.
Good evening. I have an overview of our new summer school program called Quest. Our summer school program this year, Quest, is an innovative summer school experience for students in grades K through 12. Quest is a focus on STEAM with math, science, and reading. It is a program designed for students in grades K through 12 to, with project-based experiences. All of our courses in the Quest program are built around the Missouri learning standards. Students in grades K through 8 are guided through a series of learning experiences to deepen their knowledge around these learning standards. Students in grades 9 through 12 high school are earning credit, either recovering credit that they didn't earn during the regular school year, or they are earning additional credit, and I'll kind of get into that as we go through the presentation. Our Quest program is, again, for those students, any student in the Kansas City area is eligible for that program, so those are students who are currently enrolled in our student, in our school system, or those are students who may be enrolled in charter schools or neighborhood schools, maybe students that are staying with a relative during the summertime. Our enrollment goal is around 6,000 students across both our KCPS Quest locations and our summer school partner sites. We have a number of locations where we will have summer school this year. We have some elementary locations here, Faxon, Foreign Language, Hale Cook, Harold Holliday, James, King, Trailwoods, and Wendell Phillips. We've zoned these locations out, and we rotate through the various buildings in order to give just some time to clean those buildings and do overhaul maintenance, those kinds of things as we go through, but it gives a different building in each one of those zones. So those are our elementary locations. We have two secondary locations. Those are 7 through 12 locations, Northeast High School and Central Middle. Then we also have some alternative locations, Success at Anderson and the Middle College Program. We opened our online enrollment March 4th for students to enroll, and then our paper applications went home March 11th. We added something new this year that I'm really excited about, and this is our transportation zone maps. So one of the unique things about summer school is that students can go to any building that they choose. So you don't have to go to your neighborhood-zoned school. The catch is, if you want transportation, you have to go to your neighborhood-zoned school, as we can't just bus students all over the city. So as a parent, you maybe want your child to stay at grandma's house for the summer, you need to figure out what school they would be going to. Well, just similar to the regular school year where we have the Find My School app, we created the same thing this summer for the transportation zone map. So you can go on, you can plug in an address that you're going to be staying, your child's going to be at, and you can figure out what school they would be attending for the summer program. So I think that's a really big plus for our families and something that was really instrumental and something some of our community, you know, really said would be helpful, so I think that's a big win for us. We have a number of partnerships that we utilize in the summer, and they look in twofold, and so I'm excited about this. Our partners that we provide, and we actually act as an LEA for this summer, are Alvin Ailey and Boys and Girls Club. Alvin Ailey operates out of Paseo. They provide two programs. They provide a club-type program, a camp, that is for our middle school students, and then they provide a high school enrichment program in which students can earn credit. Then we also have the Boys and Girls Program, which is at two locations, and then Link provides before and after care for all of our students within the, within our district. We also added a partner experience. These are not programs where anyone, we're acting as an LEA, but these are where we are actually partnering with people to provide experiences for our students. So we have met with these community agencies to provide opportunities to connect to the curriculum in a variety of ways in and out of the traditional classroom. So when I say that, I'm not talking about just field trips. I'm talking about experiences, learning opportunities for students to look at various things, and you see some of those are actually our own sites, such as Manual, Career, and Technical Center. Then we have some others like the School of Economics, the Federal Reserve, some of those kinds of things. So there's all, these are just a very small sampling of some of the sites that are on there. We've done some really intentional marketing this year around our Quest program. We've sent out some Save the Date cards. We've done a huge social media campaign, which we're having some really large success on. We've done school-based campaign, and we're just focusing on a number of innovative ways to draw students to our programs. Here's an example of one of our marketing materials that we sent home already with students, and you can see they're in some of our offices as well as local businesses and various other places. We look at our high school courses, really when we look at all of our curriculum, we, three things come to mind: intentionality, innovation, and student voice. So we listened to our students at the end of summer school last year. What went well, what didn't? One of the things that our high school students really talked about is we moved to a blended virtual model last year, but overwhelmingly, they talked about sitting in the classroom all day long doing virtual instruction. They did not like that. And so we heard them, we listened to them, we talked about the fact that how can we, how can we look to expand these opportunities and then also take that to the next level? So we, working with other school districts and seeing how this is working in other areas, we have opened that up so that students now have a much more blended variety. So students can learn in the traditional setting where they can come to our school district, they can sit in a seat, they can have those blended course offerings, or they can learn 24/7 anytime, anywhere in a traditional virtual offering. So I'm really excited to bring that to our students. We have 16 courses that students can get ahead in. There's just a few listed there: Health, Physical Education, Digital Arts, and a number of others. They can also recover 11 different courses, and then a host of others is determined by individual student needs. There's a combination of those classes. We have labs that are staffed daily by certified teachers, and then we also have access to, students have access to their teachers on a regular basis. They have 24/7 access to the curriculum, though, and to their coursework. So that's really huge for our high school students and will help them to be able to move through that curriculum. When we look at our K through 8 curriculum, same thing, that same intentionality and student voice is really prevalent through there. We surveyed our 7th and 8th graders to see what is it that you would want to see in your curriculum? We took those surveys back from them, and we designed the curriculum directly around what they ask for. So for example, one of the courses that we are working with in 7th and 8th grade is called Food Truck Junkie. So it sounds really cool, but it's designed completely around math, science, and reading. They just don't realize that it is. But the intentionality came in that the course is, we also marketed the course. So students are working with a professional, they're connecting with a professional at the beginning of the course, then they are designing their own food truck throughout this course, they're creating all of this, and then we're taking the students to our own program, to Manual, where they are then going to cook with our chefs in our CTE program, going to get to experience that at an early age so that they can get that exposure. And then we've worked with the staff there so that not only can they get experience with the culinary, but then let's take them on a tour of the whole program. Let's show them what the whole program looks like so that we can start being intentional about getting students excited about the offerings that we have right here in the district. And so not just 7th and 8th grade, but all the way down through kindergarten, we're looking at how can we infuse those? So some of our students are designing plays and building sets, and so while we've infused all of these standards in there, then where are we taking them in our district to perform their plays, to work with our professionals to do these things? So we're really being intentional as we're doing that. We also listen to our teachers and the curriculum. We simplified how you get to it, what it looks like. Here's an example of a second-grade curriculum. The class is called Nailed It, I Can Build That. It's very, it's laid out very clear for the teacher to be able to access the curriculum, to access the data tracking, the assessment checklist, the whole piece. When you look at a lesson, here's an example of a lesson, the Writer's Workshop, the Literacy Station, exactly what the teacher needs to do as they move through. When you look at the standards that they're assessing, this is an example of the assessment and how the teacher is to track that assessment as they're going through the assessment and what standards they're specifically mastering, and then how we're collecting that information. So we really feel like we've made some really big strides in the area of summer school, and we're, we're really trying to just get away from that word anyways and calling it Quest. We did a lot of brainstorming around the word Quest and why we came up with that word, and I won't bore you with all of that, but it's really innovative, and we're excited about where we're going with that. Have any questions?
Board members, are there any questions? Dr. Jones?
So I just want to say, it sounds like you guys have a great program lined up. I appreciate you going into detail about it. So as a parent who's, child has participated and will continue to do so, I am wondering, I'm sorry, I have like a two-part question, so please bear with me. The first is, why is the program shorter than it was last summer? And then the second part is, I'm curious as to what resources we're referring parents to who might need support for the duration of the summer, as well as parents of four-year-olds. So we have schools that serve some four-year-olds, but then in the summer, we're kind of left to find something to do with them and go kind of outside the district.
So that's a great question. So I'm going to start with the four-year-old question. So DESI does not recognize pre-K and summer school. So we actually are only able for our summer school program to offer programming for K through 12. So that is why we don't have those programs available. For the duration of the programming, we are looking at putting together a list of other opportunities that are available, and we do recognize that the program is too short. And so we had, the program was actually longer. If you noticed on there, the curriculum was built for 20 days, but the snow days have compacted and compacted and compacted. But we still recognize that that's probably a little bit too short, and so we are looking at ways that we can expand for future programming.
And it does make me wonder, too, and this may be a question for Ms. Quinnly. I know that DESI has a recommended or required amount of days that every school must engage in summer school, and I'm assuming that anything above those days, DESI will not fund. We would have to fund that on our own. I don't know if that's.
We have a minimum number of days that we have to be in session, and we're well over those days.
Yes. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I shared that with the community, because there are a certain number of days that the state will fund, and anything above that, that's on our, we have to do it.
Ms. Wolfsee?
I'm not sure if this question's for you, Ms. Harrison, Dr. Harrison, but can you explain for the new board members how summer school actually funds, like how the average daily attendance in summer school helps, like with our revenues? I don't know if that's a Ms. Quinnly question, or?
Well, I could, but it'd be a like 30,000-foot view, so yeah, I'm going to let Ms. Quinnly explain that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have Ms. Thompson comes up. That's, that's our money person.
It's a part of our average daily attendance that we calculate on the total formula of revenue that we get throughout the year. We get that revenue monthly. So with the summer school budget, yes, it crosses fiscal years, but our program will be in this current fiscal year, but the partner payments will go throughout the fiscal year because we pay them monthly. So it is a part of our total average daily attendance. So we expect the students to be in attendance to get the revenue.
And so this program can take students from outside of KCPS, so charters obviously, but even people who live in Kansas and other places?
We won't get the revenue.
We don't?
If they're outside of our location, our Kansas City School District location. We will get only a portion of that revenue. We won't get the full revenue now.
Okay.
Are there other questions? Okay. I have just one question. I know that we have talked in the past about Senate Bill 319 and the students who are enrolled in programs during the summer in order to help them meet the thresholds for their reading achievement. Can you just explain, are they going to be positioned within the schools that you have identified, or could you just tell us very quickly about how those students receive their services?
Sure. We will continue the same model that we implemented last year, which is the, our current interventionists will be hired for the summer school programming, and we will place those into every one of the elementary schools. We have full-time interventionists that will work in the summer, and our Senate Bill 319 students will be placed into summer school, they'll be enrolled in summer school, and then they will receive those services during summer, and then they'll be tested, the whole process will be followed through, and then as they are retested, they will be eligible to be promoted or retained, depending upon where they fall in that continuum.
And is that a separate funding stream than our summer school reimbursement for average daily attendance? Is that a different, is there different monies for the Senate Bill 319?
When 319 hours are accumulated during the school year, those hours are added to our ADA calculation to increase that ADA.
Okay.
For the regular school year. If 319 services happen during summer, it just counts toward the summer school ADA calculation.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Abarca?
So you mentioned that parents can choose, or students can choose which school they go to based upon?
It's still not on.
All right. Here we go. All right. Now it's on. So you had mentioned that parents or students can pick whichever district, whichever school they'd like to go to. What would be the reason why someone would do that beyond maybe, I guess, residency or grandparents like you described? Are courses offered at different schools and not at all schools the same way? Or I guess, I'm trying to understand, you know, if I want an upper-level math class or something, and it's only offered at Northeast versus Central, is that, is that, am I reading that right, or is there just?
No, it traditionally only happens at our elementary level. It usually happens because of childcare. Somebody stays with grandma, goes to a daycare that's in a various neighborhood zone. that's in a various neighborhood zone. It usually doesn't happen at our high school areas.
And in terms of, like, the coursework that you're offering?
It's all the same.
All the same at every school?
Yes.
Awesome. Can you share that with us? I'm just curious to know what summer school options are.
Yeah, I don't have the actual courses with me, but we have a whole host of courses. Some of the courses that students can get a head on, for example, are courses that sometimes our kids want, especially at high school, that they might want to get out of the way, so they can take a little bit harder classes. So like your personal health, finance, PE, some of those kind of courses, and then that lets them take some of the harder math or science classes. And, but then there are also some classes, such as speech or debate, some of those kind of classes that they can take as well. And then there are also a whole host of credit recovery classes. There's just, just about every class we can do credit recovery-wise. It just, those really depend on the need of the individual student.
Okay. It would now be in order to have a motion to approve Summer School Quest program. So moved.
It has been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote. Those in favor will respond yes. Those opposed will respond no.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
There is a majority in favor of the approval of Summer School Quest program. The chair recognizes Dr. Baddel to present the Banneker Extended Year Calendar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The administration is requesting that the board take action on accepting the revised Banneker Extended Year Calendar. This has been an ongoing conversation that we've had at multiple board meetings, as we were looking to make adjustments to the calendar that would meet the needs, not only of the students, but also the faculty and staff. And last year was our first year that we operated under that year-round calendar. We realized that there were some things that we needed to do differently, so that we could make sure that our teachers are, you know, that the stress is not burning them out without necessarily getting the required breaks in. And so that's where we are now, and I think Dr. Woodley will provide a brief update on the process, and then hopefully you all will accept, and we can move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Baddel, members of the board. I am Dr. Woodley, one of the Assistant Superintendents for School Leadership, and I have the pleasure to serve as the supervisor for Banneker Elementary School. So this year, I was charged with going into Banneker and really looking at our model, that turnaround model that we're using, which is the Extended Year Calendar, and working with the administration, as well as the teachers and the community, to kind of talk about how effective this model is, and what do we need to do to streamline the efforts to really make sure that we're meeting the needs of the staff and the students at the school. As you guys know, we've had a very interesting winter with a whole lot of snow days. So although our work was looking to start the implementation of changing the calendar for next school year, we ended up having to take a look at this year's summer calendar because of all the snow days, and because the current calendar for the summer actually was impacted by having to put school back. So right now, unless there's any changes, we're looking at our, end of our school year being June 4th. And so what we're looking at for Banneker calendar for this school year is for the school to, the teachers to actually have a pre-planning days for June 6th and 7th, and the students actually start summer school, or their summer session, because it's not summer school. All Banneker students are required to attend the summer session. So it's just like June 10th, it's just like the new year for them. So whereas traditionally, in traditional, at our traditional schools, start back in August, the Banneker students start back on June 10th. So June 10th will be the start of our summer session for Banneker, and we will go through the last day for students at Banneker will end on July 12th. And we're asking for the teachers to be able to, the returning teachers to be able to have a break for July 15th through the 26th, that gives them two weeks off. Last summer, the teachers ended up with one week off, and some of those teachers didn't even get a full week off, because they attended PD in the summer. So our teachers went the whole year last year, really, without a break. So this year, based on our calendar, we were able to offer at least a two-week break in the summer, and then having them come back, the returning teachers to return on the 29th for our Teacher Institute. And so they'll attend Teacher Institute July 29th through July 31st, and then the Banneker Institute for the 1st and the 2nd. So we're looking to make sure we're offering extended learning time for teachers, as well as extended learning time for students. Now, because this is in the middle of a contract period, we have several staff members, of course, that may be retiring or may not be returning. They will end up having to work until July 22nd, which is the, was, what the current calendar calls for. Next year's calendar, we're looking to start the summer session to begin on June 1st and end on July 3rd, allowing our teachers to have a three-week break to be able to give them, you know, to really focus on making sure they have some time to kind of recover and be ready to be refreshed for the new school year. Are there any questions for me?
Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Abarkah?
All right. So do, are students able to then take advantage of the summer school programs for that small window, if parents need some alternative to having school in this scenario? Is that an option?
Well, the summer school programs are going on at the same time as we're having our summer session, so those students, when, Banneker students would attend Banneker for summer session.
Sorry, my buttons. So I guess I mean in that break, when they're in their summer break timeframe, are they eligible then to participate even for that small window, or is that just not even a...
We're doing those two weeks, no one is having summer.
Oh, okay.
It's in July, so there's no summer programs offered during that time.
Good point.
But we are looking, Banneker community, we're looking to look at partnerships to be able to have options for students if parents need some different things for students to do, so we're looking at developing some partnerships accordingly.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Seeing no other questions, it would be in order to have a motion to approve this item, Banneker Extended Year Calendar. So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the Banneker Extended Year Calendar for 2019-2020 school year. Is there any debate on this motion? Seeing no debate, the question is on approval of the Extended Year Calendar for Banneker Elementary School. This will be a roll call vote. Those in favor will respond yes. Those opposed will respond no. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
The motion passes.
The chair recognizes Dr. Baddel to present this proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next two items deal with our food services contracts and generally serve as just general renewals that we do in order to continue to provide the services to our students. This first item is U.S. Foods Incorporated, in the amount of $4,600,000, and we're just asking the board to accept the renewal of that contract to continue our services with U.S. Foods.
Are there any questions? Mr. Abarkah?
So obviously, this is probably not the best time to bring this up, seeing how we're being asked to approve this or not, but I wondered, as I think the world was amazed by the Facebook video that talked about the food services reusing the food that wasn't eaten that day, is there space to have that type of discussion, given that we're about to approve their contract or not?
You're talking about the leftovers in cafeterias, that there's one school across the country that started repackaging for take-home dinner?
Yes.
We are so fortunate here to have a really amazing Director of Child Nutrition Services, very inventive, has really worked hard to make food accessible to kids at all times, and we're exploring in Missouri what our legal abilities are around that.
Ms. Wolfsey?
I want to make sure I understand something correctly when I look at this. So the U.S. Foods and even the Belafonte, but where we write, the procurement department solicited 14 vendors, seven which represented MBEWVs. Am I reading that correctly, that of the 14, seven were in that category?
Correct.
But that we only received one response?
Correct.
And so my question is, you know, after what we've just gone through with our transportation, where one of the decisions we made to get the lot and whatnot resulted in us having more folks bidding for, I worry, when you only have one response, how competitive that bid is. Is my thinking off in that regard?
It is not. This in particular, this is the primary food contract for us. We have a few smaller ones that end up going to smaller, ideally, local vendors. The U.S. Foods is a giant in the industry, and they are able to timely provide the service. This is daily delivery to specific school buildings. So it is a, it's a difficult contract to be able to manage. You pretty much have to be huge to do it. And so I believe that limits the number of people who are able, actually, to say, I think we can serve you well there.
Are there any other questions on this? Okay.
It would now be in order to have a motion to approve the IFRS Foods for 4.6 million.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate? Seeing no debate, the question is on approving U.S. Foods Inc. contract. This will be a roll call vote. Those in favor will respond yes. Those opposed respond no. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
There is a majority in favor, so the contract is approved. Are there any remaining questions regarding the approval of Belafonte Ice Cream Company contract? Okay.
It would now be in order to have a motion to approve this item.
So moved.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the Belafonte Ice Cream Company contract. Is there any debate? Seeing no debate, the question is on approval of Belafonte Ice Cream. This will be a roll call vote.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
There is a majority in favor for the approval of Belafonte Ice Cream. At this time, we will go to our consent agenda items, and for our new board members, obviously, we take these as a, as a package, and so for those who make a motion, and the motion would need to cover under consent, just stated items 1 through 29, if you make that motion. So it is now in order to accept a motion for consent.
I'd move approval of the consent agenda, items number 1 through 29.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate? Hearing no debate, yeah, I'm sorry.
Question for clarification?
Yes.
This is just a general question. So when we look at something like the tutoring programs, I assume that the district already has a way of evaluating the effectiveness of them over time, and just wondering, you know, how that data, what frequency that data becomes available.
Yes, yes, we do. Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
And one comment I'll make for the public and the audience at home is that all of these consent items are accessible online. You can read each one of these contracts. They are all posted and available for everyone to view and see the detail of the contracts that we are approving this evening. So at this time, it would be in order for a roll call vote.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?